Well, good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you all to the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council for Wednesday, November 17th. We are starting at 6:31 in the evening. As has been our practice for the last, well, more than a year now, I think. Tonight's meeting will be conducted via video and teleconference only. The agenda that has been posted has information that the public can use to log on to the Zoom call that we will be using tonight. And I invite members of the public to do that and join us for the meeting. And with that, we'll get started with a roll call and the pledge.
Councilmember Candell.
I am here.
Councilmember Paulson.
Here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hillmer.
Here.
Mayor Harrah.
I'm here as well. So with that, and the flag is waving, let's say the pledge of allegiance for those of us on the call who can join us, please do so now. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. So we'll move on to the agenda, and the first item on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda or are listed as part of the consent calendar. If you would like to speak on any matter, please identify yourself and where you live. We'll try to keep track of the time depending on how many folks are out there. But generally, it's our practice to allow people to spend no more than three minutes to speak. So with that, Allison, can you open it up and see if we have anybody in the public?
I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members. Our first public comment will come from Matt Eggers.
Hey, folks, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everyone. My name's Matt Eggers. I live at 115 William Avenue in Larkspur with my wife and two kids. And I just wanted to quickly cover two topics. Well, and first, in case I run out of time, just say thank you to all of you guys for your for your service. I really appreciate it. And my comment, I wanted to comment on the topic of the City Hall building. And I am definitely in favor of preserving that building. I think it's a beautiful building, and it adds a lot of character to downtown and and it brings a lot of people to downtown. And I think having a thriving little downtown like that is really important for community building and just to have a third place for people to go. And I think buildings that are attractive and warm and historic and that bring people regularly there for what they have to do there is important. So, you know, I'm throwing myself behind doing something to preserve that building and keeping it operating as City Hall. And the second topic is much more pedestrian. No pun intended, but the, I think the intersection, we've been doing work on the intersections on Magnolia, but the one at William and Magnolia is super dangerous. I cross that intersection multiple times a day, as does the huge amount of pedestrian traffic that comes down William Avenue to get to Dark Park and and walk through downtown. And that people just drive at 30, 40 miles an hour. They don't stop for pedestrians. We've been doing work on other crosswalks around there, and I think we really need to do some work for traffic calming at that one as well. Because it's one of the busiest ones, and it's really dangerous. That's it. Thanks again for your service, everybody. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Matt, for joining us this evening. Anyone else in the public?
I'm looking for any additional raised hands or emailed public comments. And there is no further public comment.
Okay, good. Well, we'll close that agenda item, the public open time. And we'll move on to proclamations and presentations. Agenda item number three, we have no presentation. I'm sorry, we know proclamations tonight, but we do have a presentation from the Tamalpas Union High School District Superintendent Tara Tapier, who was going to talk about plans for facility. Well, facility planning process that they have in mind. So with that, take it away, Tara.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Tara Topia. I'd like to say good evening to Mayor Hara, Vice Mayor Hillmer, Councilmembers Candell, Paulson, and Way. Thank you for providing us an opportunity to speak tonight. As I said, I'm Tara Topia. I am the superintendent of the Tamalpas Union High School District. And here with me tonight is our Board of Trustees Clerk Karen Lobeka. And we're here tonight in order to partner with our community and make the public aware of the TAM district is at the very starting stages of developing a new facilities master plan. The purpose of this plan is to identify facilities needs that exist at each of our schools, prioritize improvements based on their urgency and importance, and develop a strategy for completing the upgrades. The Office of Public School Construction requires us to have a facilities master plan in place to be eligible to capture any state bond funding that might be available. Through our initial facilities assessment, the district identified required infrastructure improvements at all of our campuses, which is not unexpected, given the age of most of our facilities. We are reaching out to the community for input to help guide the creation of our facilities master plan. The district has a survey available to all community members. It's linked to the front page of our website at www.tamdistrict.org under For Your Information. The title of the survey is Facilities Master Planning Questionnaire. We will also be holding webinar-based town hall meetings for community members to gather more information and to be able to provide some input. Those town halls will be held on January 19th at 6:00 PM and March 2nd at 6:00 PM. Right now, we are, as we said, the beginning stages. The timeline for this process is November, December is our, what we call our kickoff and visioning. January and March is where we do our, January through March, sorry, is where we do our input gathering from staff, students, parents, and community members so that we can make sure that we're partnering with all of our constituents to make sure that we have plans moving forward that meet the needs of our community members. And then in April, we will do plan development and board presentation with a consideration for a recommendation to approve the plan shortly after. So we wanted to provide that information. And I'm a board member Lobeka. If you have anything you'd like to add.
I don't, other than we really do welcome community input. Not only do we welcome it, we seek it so that we can make make plans accordingly. These are for our campuses and buildings for the next 20 years. And as Tara Tara mentioned, our our buildings are old. And a lot of them have not seen enough attention in many years due to budget constraints and so now's now's the time for us to take a look and make sure that we're accommodating not only our student community, but our greater community as well.
Okay, thanks, Karen. Are there any questions from the council as a result of the presentation tonight? We see, I see two hands, and Catherine Way will go first.
Hi, Tara. Nice to meet you. I haven't had a chance since my kids have been out of high school for a while. I have a few questions. I've been diving into this as a member of the Better Together Marin Coalition Group as a citizen volunteer, not as a council member. So first, I'd like to ask you about declining enrollments. And today's Marin IJ cover story was about declining enrollments. How are you? Are you in the board forecasting what's going to happen in the TAM district with declining enrollments this year? I know we're even down from last year.
Thank you for the question. Yes. So in the TAM district, we're actually even from last year. Well, we're up nine students overall from last year. But we do have a projection projected declining enrollment over the next 10 years, and we have projected that. But we are going to drop down to where we were in 2010 and not below that. And so we have not, we don't plan to add any facilities. We plan to only upgrade the existing facilities. So we are not looking to expand in any way. Right now, we actually have portable classrooms that are needed to accommodate the enrollment growth that we have experienced. We have seven at Redwood and we have four at TAM. So those eventually will will be removed. And so we we don't anticipate expanding, and we anticipate being able to fit nicely back into our campuses over the next 10 years.
So is there anticipation of doing another bond measure or to do the renewal of Measure J? Because I know Measure J expires June 2022.
So the the parcel tax actually has been renewed. It was renewed last year. So we haven't, you know, one of the processes for the master plan is to determine cost. And from the cost of the necessary, you know, we're focusing on necessary upgrades. And based on that, the board will determine whether, you know, if and when a bond would be needed. Our existing bonds do start to roll off the books in the next two to four years.
Okay. And and then lastly, I'm fascinated to see what you're going to do in regards to how education and academics has changed during the pandemic year when you've had to pivot to to online learning and to various other ways of getting curriculum through and how education in the next century or next 10 to 15 years may even do more of that with more academies or online learning. How do you anticipate reviewing that?
That's a great question. You know, right now, per the state, we are required to provide virtual independent learning. We have approximately 36 students across the district. We have just about 5,100 students currently. We have about 36 who have decided to engage in that. And as a district, we are definitely looking at ways that we can be more flexible and also how we can maximize our resources with these new the ability to sort of zoom, if you will, around. There's a chance that students at different campuses can all take the same class so that we, you know, instead of offering a singleton, which we mean by that is like one one specialty class such as biomedical sciences, for example. You know, as we decline enrollment, instead of not offering that at all sites, we offer it and kids can zoom in. So we only have to offer one section across the entire district. So those are ways that we can be really efficient with and flexible with our resources.
Yeah, I'm very supportive of shared services and finding ways to take existing spaces and existing institutions of governance and that we're all paying tax money for and figuring out how to use them more efficiently. So I look forward to participating in this because I think we have you have opportunities that way. We have a lot of civic buildings around your five high schools that overlap possibilities for for structural and functional use are probably there. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Catherine. And thanks. Thanks for those responses. I think I saw Gabe's hand up previously.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thanks for coming, Tara. Good to see you, Karen. I think Catherine asked a lot of good questions. I'm, I suppose, just to, you know, ask one. You know, in your survey, there's a lot of questions about, you know, what the community might want for content curriculum programming. You know, are there any issues, aesthetic issues? Just from the school board and the school, you know, superintendent point of view, what do you see as as the biggest financial need? You know, I know, for example, and one other thing is, you know, maybe Redwood specifically because we're talking to the Larkspur City Council and it's largely Redwood students. So, you know, what would you say if you had a limited amount of money? Where would it go first?
That's a great, you know, I think the, you know, we always work within limited amounts of money. So it's very for us, you know, one thing, a few things we learned during the pandemic were that our classrooms are not standard size. So a standard by standard is 900 square feet. Many of our classrooms are much smaller than that, which, you know, when we had to keep kids six feet apart, became, you know, a huge hindrance to being able to provide more in-person instruction. But it wasn't until they reduced that to three feet that we could bring more kids back on campus. So I think upgrading our existing facilities to have those standard sizes and also proper HVAC, you know, our Redwood High School is not, none of our high schools are fully air conditioned. And with, which sounds like a nice to have, but as a teacher who taught in a room that was often 97 degrees on hot days, that's not a really conducive learning environment. And now we know with with things like, unfortunately, we deal with regular, you know, poor air quality days and things like that. So having those high-level HVAC systems and then having standard-sized classrooms for those educational purposes that can be flexible. And it doesn't, you know, I think doing that, we can do that within our existing spaces. I think it's a matter of reconfiguring things rather than rebuilding them.
If I may add to, you know, some of the basic things need to be done, too. We have leaking roofs that have been leaking for a long time that they just can't be patched anymore. We have flooding parking lots that can't, that haven't been, we haven't been able to address and fix. There are there are just some really basic needs. We're not talking about necessarily a beautification project. If that if that results in some of the work we have to do, terrific. But to Tara's point, there there's some pretty basic needs to bring us not only to present day, but to to provide in the future to be green and and safe.
Great. Thank you very much. And I was gonna just close by, you know, like Catherine, I'm really appreciative of you being here, interested in the process. And I think climate adaption, like I know during the pineapple storm, you know, the Redwood parking lot was a lake and you guys are close to like Riviera Circle and everybody. So I'm really curious to see how that can be mitigated or, you know, what can be done. So again, many thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we all share share that expression of appreciation. Any other comments or questions? I see Scott just raised his hand. Go ahead.
Yeah, just sorry, quick, quick follow up. I just want to understand a 900 square feet is normal classroom size. How big are our classrooms? And are we fitting the same number of students in that are normally fit in a 900 square foot classroom? And and what kind of problems does that cause?
Right. That's a great question because our students are also larger than some of our other schools around us. So yes, are we have across the district, we have classrooms that range from as small as 500 square feet up to the 900. At Redwood, they're closer, but they're they're run around 800. Some of them are 750. And again, but it, you know, with more modern furniture, it's a little easier to fit. But yes, we are fitting 30, 32 kids in a classroom. You you cannot do that if you have to keep six feet apart or any, you know, any, any significant distance.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else from the council? Just a thumbs up from our vice mayor and appreciate that shared shared by. Is that, that's a finger up, too. I think we got, we had all kinds of digits going over there.
Just a thank you, Tara. That was a great explanation of your process. We look forward to participating and thank you, other council members, for your great questions.
Thank you. Well, thank you. Appreciate the time.
We appreciate your your coming to join us tonight. You're at a very early stage in this process. We understand that. And look forward very much to your public outreach after the first of the year and joining you in some of your public meetings and meeting with you on an individual basis as well as you go forward. So exciting prospects and and we wish you the best of luck and we'll be waiting in the wings to to give you our support. So with that, unless there's anything further, thank you both for joining us tonight, and we'll close this item on the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you.
So moving along, the next item on our agenda is item number four, approval of the consent calendar. These are matters that typically are considered to be routine and can be approved by a single vote of the council. We will not discuss individual matters separately unless one of the council members wishes to remove one or more items for separate consideration or members of the public wish to do the same. So moving on, let's see if there are any members of the council that would like to remove any item on the consent calendar for separate consideration. Catherine Way has her hand up.
I don't want to remove something. I just want to acknowledge 4.5 and the about 10 public comments that came in. So they're on the agenda online now. So if people want to read them, but I just want to acknowledge that we had 10 public comments on that one.
Yes, and they were all, I think, in support of what we would propose to do in the resolution, which is to change the name. Any other, anything else from the council? Allison, do we see anyone in the public who would like to comment or remove an item from the consent calendar for separate consideration?
I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members or emailed comments. And there is no public comment.
Okay, good. Well, with that, we'll bring things to a close with a vote. So I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion. Number moves. Number seconds.
Yeah, there we go. So Scott and Dan, second. Let's call the roll call for a vote.
Councilmember Candell.
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson.
Yes.
Councilmember Way.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hillmer.
Yes.
Mayor Harrah.
Yes. So with that vote, the consent calendar is approved, and we will move on in the agenda to the next item, which is the city manager's oral report. Our city manager, Dan Schwartz, is waiting anxiously to give us his report this evening and take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I have just one thing I want to share with the council and the community. I'm going to share my screen. If I can get that to work today. Hopefully, my screen is up. And what I want to share with folks is I strongly encourage if you have an opportunity to go to centralmarinfire.org and take a look at the section on current projects being done under hazard mitigation. We've just updated it. I want to thank the Central Marine Fire Staff for getting this and keeping it up to date. It gives you a wonderful summary of the work that's being done with the countywide Measure C tax that was passed to fund the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority and how we're using our local share of that money, putting it to use to make our community safer. And so it gives you both the in-progress and the upcoming projects. It also has some nice summary of work to date in terms of helping the community understand how we can make our personal environment safer from wildfire. And then we have a nice summary of the vegetation management that's being done. So strongly encourage folks to go there and just want to again thank the community for its support of Measure C and the Marin Wildlife Prevention Authority. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks. And your share screen is now off. So thanks very much for that report. Or any questions from the council on the city manager's report? I see Councilmember Way has her hand up.
Hi, Dan. I see that the community survey closed on the 15th. Do you know when we should be expecting to see some results?
I don't have a timeline yet for that. I'm sorry.
Okay. I think probably, I mean, January, would that sound reasonable?
I think that's reasonable.
I'm really looking forward to reading that. So thanks.
Yeah, I think we all are. Anything else from the council? Gabe, Councilmember Paulson.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the city manager for for posting this report, you know, serving on the MWPA. I think it's a a great, you know, communication tool, answers a lot of questions and timely. So thank you.
Okay, anything else from the council? See, no hands up. We'll invite the public to provide comment or ask questions of the city manager on his report tonight. Allison, do we see anyone in the queue for that?
Looking for any raise hands from our audience members or any emailed comments. And there is no public comment.
Okay, well, good. Well, thank you, Dan, for your report. We'll close that item out and we'll move on to council members' oral reports and comments. So I'll ask our council if anyone has a report to make this evening. Vice Mayor Hillmer.
I just a quick report. I attended the SMART Board of Directors meeting today. And an interesting item came up. SMART has been moving forward, taking over the freight responsibilities of the Northwest Pacific Railroad, mostly in Sonoma. But today, we gave direction to do our best to as quickly as possible, remove the liquid propane, liquid petroleum gas tanks that currently occupy a stretch of that rail line as you head towards Sonoma sometimes. And sometimes it's lining, they're lined up in in the Sonoma Valley there. So I thought that was a big step for us today, and I look forward to the implementation of that direction. Thank you.
Good. Thank you for that report. Are we going to be seeing freight trains in Marin?
We're trying to work through how it works and the business model right now. We've got a lot of work to do. But we see it as an opportunity, especially with respect to many of the agricultural opportunities that exist in Sonoma.
Yeah, all right, good. Any further questions for our vice mayor? We'll move on to other reports. Any other council member? Councilmember Paulson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just two very brief reports. One is I was invited to join the board for Marin Youth Marin Youth Healthy Partnerships, which, as some of you know, has been looking to get grant money and tries to address some of the issues in the school district that we just saw, you know, particularly TAM Union and also the middle school. So I'll have the good fortune of working with Larry Chu, who's another board member. And we have about six or eight months to try to get grant money as the grant expires in in 2022. And we're trying to get the five-year grant. So I'm really strategizing. And I'm also really trying to see how we can bring equity and and some of the issues that have come up in the past couple of years in this next round of planning and strategy. So I'm pretty excited and you know, just there, even in the IJ, there were recent articles about some of the stress and challenges for kids in the high schools and the middle school. So I really am looking forward to being part of the, you know, you know, trying to support out there. And then secondly, I just want to acknowledge one of our community members. I didn't get to it last time. Peter Mazonis, he put together a great Volunteer Appreciation Day in Piper Park. And actually, sorry, the the emergency service appreciation. So he invited, you know, Chief Martin and the Central Marin people and also our city manager and all the people have worked through the fire season, through the storm season. And it sounded like a great event, some great food. They had the trailers there. And I'm continually encouraged to see the the public participation, you know, from our drills last weekend to even emails I got this afternoon. You know, people are really concerned. They're really involved. And it's one of the most satisfying things about being on the city council. We're all volunteers. And it's great to see people out there today for public comment and discussion for the library. And so gratitude to Peter and gratitude to you all. So thank you.
Okay, thanks, Gabe. Councilmember Way.
I second that on Peter and his hard work. Especially for that Madron Canyon NRG. Two things. Last Friday, Councilmember Candell and myself toured the South Aliso Home Key project, and they will be offering in the future tours of that building to the community. And I just would like everyone to know that you can sign up for alerts as to more information as this project moves along so you can participate. I believe it's on MarinCounty.org/ProjectHomeKey. But I might need to have the city manager tell me if that's the right URL. I'm pretty sure that's the correct one now. And all comments regarding your interest in and questions about this should also be directed to Supervisor Rice, and her office is responding. And second is, if you all recall back in the spring, I brought forward to the council the age-friendly Larkspur and got our commitment to support age-friendly Larkspur while I've finally getting my act together. And the letter of intent has been written to AARP and will be signed by the mayor, which is step three on the process. And I will be organizing the steering committee in the first week in December to get this off the ground. So we will be not the last one in Marin, sitting town in Marin that is not age-friendly. And and I'd like to give kudos to Sarah Robinson, who's the age-friendly coordinator for the county, who's been really instrumental in helping push this along. So anyone in the audience who's listening and is interested in supporting the steering committee in getting age-friendly Larkspur up and running. We have a lot of people interested. And there's a little bit of work to do, not a tremendous And there's a little bit of work to do, not a tremendous amount, but it should be very rewarding. So reach out to me if you're interested in participating. Look, and we'll look forward to getting a small group together in December to do the next step, which is to fill out our assessment form.
Okay, anything else? Anything else from the council? I just have a couple of things real quick I'd like to mention.
Before you do that, Mr. Mayor, I just, I'm going to share a screen really quick to address one comment from Councilmember Way. So this is the website Councilmember Way was referring to. So it's www.1251salicio, all one word, dot com. But if you type 1251 South Aliso into your preferred search engine, you'll find this website as well.
Thank you for that. That's, and it has a get updates bar.
Yeah, up in the right corner, you can press get update.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a pretty, it's a pretty good website. I've looked at it a couple of times. Okay, well, let me just cover two items real quick for me. The first item has to do with MCE, just a little quick update on what's been going on there. I'm on the standing technical and executive committees for MCE. And we had meetings both of those committees on November 4th and 5th, right after our last city council meeting. The technical committee focused, as you might imagine, on various technical issues, primarily focusing in that meeting on the Operational Integrated Resource Management Plan, which is a planning document that's required required under state law to lay out plans and expectations for energy procurement by MCE. It's a, it's a process that all energy providers, including the, the public utilities, the IOUs, as well as entities like MCE, the Community Choice Aggregation entities, have to go through. So the, the planning process is a robust, robust one and goes through 2023 with expectations to update it after that. So very pleased with the way in which MCE is handling its procurement planning processes. Probably of a little greater interest to the public is the, the executive committee, which was on November 5th. The focus of that one was on rate setting and the need for increased revenues for MCE, primarily to, to cover increased procurement costs. The cost of energy around the board has been going up dramatically during the last year or so. That's not just something that MCE is facing, but it's something that energy providers throughout the country are facing. Sure, you've seen reports, for example, how the price of natural gas, which we don't rely on that much, has really gone through the roof in recent months, along with other, other costs of energy. So the, 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 the recommendation coming out of the executive committee was to promote a very modest rate increase. It's actually modest, in part because one component of MCE's rates is what's called the PCIA, which I think I've mentioned in previous comments. That's a charge that has to be paid to compensate PG&E for the number of customers that MCE has taken off of their books. And it's a creature of state law, but it's a, it's a big chunk of what we have to pay or what our ratepayers have to pay for MCE energy is that compensatory charge for a variety of reasons, including in part the fact that the price of energy has gone up. The PCIA is expected to go down significantly, probably for the first time that I can remember since being on the MCE board. So that's good news. And that will provide a significant offset to what would otherwise be required in terms of a rate increase. And in all events, with whatever it is we have to do to, to address our rates, we are projecting rates across the board to remain below PG&E's comparable rates for the foreseeable future. So that is, that is, that is good news, I think, for those who may be considering alternatives. That, that recommendation from the executive committee will be presented by yours truly at the full board meeting of MCE tomorrow night. The only other thing I wanted to briefly mention is I attended, I don't know if others on the council did as well, a presentation to the San Rafael City Council on Monday by TAM concerning the 101 to 280 connector project. They're still in the early stages of planning out that project and considering a wide variety of, of options, including, to some extent, options that would go over the open space between San Rafael and the city of Larkspur. One of the council members even suggested that we expand Surfrance's Drake to provide for that connection that is not on the board or on the table as far as TAM is concerned. Most of the principally viable options that TAM is looking at are all within the city of San Rafael. And any, any one of them should provide significant benefits to us in terms of the traffic flow off of 101 on Surfrance's Drake headed towards the bridge. So that's good. Again, they're in the very initial stages of planning, but it's a very interesting presentation. We may want to consider having them do something similar for our council at some point in the future. So that's all I wanted to say on those two topics. Vice Mayor Helmer.
Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, it's the 101 580 connector.
What did I say?
You said 280.
Oh, I'm thinking of my drive dad to see my daughter at college in Santa Clara. Sorry about that. Yes, that's, it's 580, not the 280. Thank you for that clarification. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll close this part of the agenda and move on. Normally, we'll hear public hearings. At this point, we do not have any public hearing scheduled tonight. So we will go on to business items for which we have two, 8.1 and 8.2. 8.1 is the first one, which involves a further review of options for development of the city's property at the intersection of Rose Lane and Doherty Drive. I know we've received a lot of public comments in, in the email traffic so far. Those are posted on the agenda. And I expect we may see some more from the public tonight verbally. But before we do that, could we have a, of a report from staff on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is the third time we've come together to sort of talk to you about the situation that exists for the city as we recognize that the age deterioration, 400 Magnolia requires that we make some key decisions about what our public assets and infrastructure are going to be going forward, both in the short term and long term, recognizing that we have opportunities at our property, our vacant property at Rose Lane and Doherty. We've focused heavily on that property and potential on that property to date. And at your last meeting, had a fairly broad and open discussion about options from the council. I realized after the meeting, I got a lot of questions, including from some council members about what exactly was decided or what direction do you think you got? So Julian Skinner, our Public Works Director, and I thought we should return, summarize our understanding of the direction to date, seek any further clarification from the council. I'm also starting to hear from folks who are aware that we are looking at the State Library Grant Matching Program. And we'll talk a little bit more about that tonight. Folks are asking, well, where would the city come up with matching money? So we're going to give you some preliminary thoughts this evening. There's a lot more to come. This is an early stage of a long process and a lot of conversation that'll follow. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Julian. He's going to take you through a presentation. And then I'll follow with a simple presentation to talk a little bit about city finances.
Good. Thanks, Dan. Julian, it's, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Julian Skinner, Public Works Director. Load up a PowerPoint here. Okay, so as the city manager mentioned, we have a brief presentation tonight. I'm going to go over some of the discussions that we've had at previous meetings, as well as a couple of updates. And then we'll talk a little bit about the timeline for moving forward, which involves a grant application for the State Library Grants. And then we'll talk about, we'll summarize with our understanding of direction moving forward at this point. And then the city manager will follow up with a discussion of city funds. So this process started as far as the incorporation of potential city hall council chambers, relocation based on a survey we had performed of the existing building at 400 Magnolia. As we detailed in previous presentations, the building has some pretty significant issues that come with a pretty hefty price tag if we were to repair, renovate, fix those issues of the current building. So that prompted the discussion of whether we should be looking at alternate locations to invest that money in a new city hall. So at the last meeting, October 20th, we did come to you with some questions and sought direction. And this slide here summarizes where we feel we are now, outlines some of the steps that we've taken and that we're pursuing at the moment, as well as some of the items that we agreed would need some more conversation moving forward. So the direction we're moving under at the moment is that we are planning for a new home for the library at the community facilities parcel at the corner of Rose and Doherty. As well as that, we are exploring possibility of relocating the city offices and council chambers together with a library at that same parcel. So that's the direction we're under at the moment is moving forward to plan for the new library at that site, as well as exploring the potential for city offices and council chambers to be at that same location. The other items that we've touched on before, but we haven't made decisions on yet and requires more engagement is with a new building at that parcel, should we be looking at traditional construction or less costly and quicker timeframe modular or prefabricated construction? So we've started that conversation, but more to come down the line on, on where we land on that. And then the other is what happens with the existing city hall building at 400 Magnolia if the city hall and the council chambers move out of that building? That's another item that we haven't made decisions on. We've identified we'd need some community conversations moving forward. So this is a recap of the basic information that we had in the previous presentations. This is our matrix of the functions, the city functions that we have and the potential locations. This is the same information we've provided before. This is kind of the baseline of where we started when we looked at these options. And then we came up with this exhibit for basically the amount of space that we were talking about. So people could understand in the context of the parcel at Rose Lane. It shows just blocks of square footage for the city offices, a library, some flex space. And then the parking to support buildings of those sizes on that site. Here's a couple of evolutions beyond my crude boxes. These are artistic renderings that the Commons Foundation undertook. And so as you see here, the one on the left shows how they presented a 5,000 square foot building, the look on the site. The one on the right was the rendering of if they were to build a 10,000 square foot building on the site. And so we're looking at this from the Rose Lane subdivision out towards Doherty Drive is in the background is how these sketches are oriented. And so what I did was I just took our box sketches and just matched them to show that how those spaces would fit on this site if we were to follow the sketches that the Commons Foundation had developed before. So this is again showing a 10,000 square foot building here, one building, and then a similar sized courtyard or flex space outside of it. And then the parking beyond for the 10,000 square foot. They also did show some sketches for an ultimate development of the site, which is their 20,000 square foot footprint. So this is essentially two 10,000 square foot buildings. They also did some renderings for what they imagined the inside of the building could look like. And so I will say that at this point, we've had conversations about ground up construction and about modular and prefabricated construction. I would say if we're looking at these sketches, we're looking at something that tends more towards the ground up construction of a building that's designed by an architect and goes through the traditional design bid build process. There are certainly components of this that could be worked into a prefabricated. But there's, as you look at this and you see the different roof lines and you see some of the exposed beams and some of the architectural detail. This is more of a representation of what a full design bid build project would look like. But there would be some components of this that you would be able to work into a prefabricated building. And you could also take a free prefabricated building and work more and more of these components in. But then the cost of your prefabricated building starts to go up and you start to get closer to what it would be for a traditional construction. And so here again is just my boxes, my space for showing what those footprints could look like on that parcel if we followed the sketches that the Commons Foundation developed. The other thing that came up in conversation was the access to the parcel and what it potentially could look like and the opportunity for creating some parking on the smaller parcel that's on the other side of Rose Lane from the Commons parcel. So this is just a very preliminary layout of what that access could look like. And so this would involve potentially widening the section of Rose Lane from the access to the Commons parcel so that it could accommodate a left turn pocket at the signal. And then also make use of, as I mentioned, that vacant parcel for some additional parking. And then we're showing a traffic circle here, basically aligning the, what would be the entrance to the Commons parcel with what is currently a closed access to the back of the shopping center. And then, so this is just preliminary. Obviously, we would have discussions with the Rose Lane neighborhood. We understand this is their one of their primary accesses to their residential neighborhood too. So make sure they were involved in conversations about reconfiguration of the street. And then also, as this would become the entrance to the Commons parcel, we'd have conversations about if there were any additional, you know, maintenance agreements that would have to be reconsidered for this segment of the street if it were to function as the main access to the Commons parcel.
Dan Helmer here. May I ask a question through the mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Julian, on this diagram, could you please clarify that there isn't, well, first of all, north is to the left Doherty Drive and that there is in fact, it looks, it looks almost through the super, superimposition of the lines over the photo that there is no, it look, it almost looks like it's one way.
Going the wrong way. It's a little hard to tell because the, yeah, this would be two-way, it would be in and out. There are two lanes leaving and they have arrows in them. So it makes it super clear. There's no arrow shown in the lane that is coming in. And it's a little hard to see because it actually lands over the existing sidewalk. So it's hard to see that that is a travel lane, but it is indeed. So this would maintain one lane in and two lanes at the intersection out.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. Since we're taking a quick break, or any, any other questions from council at this point, or can we move on? Okay, Julian, why don't you continue with your presentation? Thanks.
So the next slide is a summary of the costs and the timeframes of construction that we presented at the last meeting. The last meeting we were representing, we had the two boxes and we were calling a 5,000 square foot library and a 5,000 square foot city hall slash council chambers. As you saw in the Commons Foundation sketches, they had one 10,000 square foot building. And it may turn out that a one single building is easier to use the flex space in than two separate 5,000s. But the costs pretty much remain the same. So you could add the two costs for the 5,000 square foot library and the 5,000 square foot city hall. And that's the $10 million cost for the ground up traditional design bid build and then roughly 6 million if we were to use prefabricated. So these are the same numbers that we've presented. So these are the same numbers that we've presented before, but I did just want to mention that previously, we've been talking about two separate buildings. So if we were looking at a ten thousand square foot combined, we'd simply be adding the two five thousand square foot together.
Just one, one, one quick question, sorry to interrupt, how, how many square feet is four hundred Magnolia Avenue?
So I'm gonna cheat and go back to a slide where I have this in a table. It's about ninety three hundred square feet.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question, just Julian, one, can you go back one more? In this list, one of the questions that I recall or one of the conversations I recall was also looking at shared spaces with. Existing, for instance, having our finance department in Central Marine Police. As just in a hypothetical example, are we, I don't see any of those numbers in here.
That was a short term proposal, though, not a permanent proposal, sharing in the police building. So I don't, you know, if, if the council wants to explore part of city hall operating out of the police building permanently. We would have to figure out what that looks like if that space is really available permanently. How much we have to compensate Corde Madera for its share of that space in perpetuity. It, it'd be, it's, it's not that it's not doable, but and it's a pretty modest amount of space. So we were only proposing that temporarily.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Anything else before we go back on the presentation? Okay, Julian, why don't you continue?
So this next slide talks to the timing question, as you saw in the previous slide where I gave the costs. We also had some rough time estimates for the construction process. And so one thing to be aware of is those timelines have not started yet, the three years and the eighteen months. Or that we're looking at for a construction project. Those timelines don't start until we actually start moving on the project. And as we've mentioned, there is a state library grant coming. We don't have all the details on it yet, we haven't even seen the application, so we don't know exactly what kind of information they're going to want. And we'll have to determine before applying. But since the, that grant award will, the size of that grant award, if we get one, will determine what the budget is. There's certain parts of this process that we can't really start until we know the result of that grant application. And so we know the grants are likely to be due in February of twenty twenty two. What we don't know is what the review and approval process is going to be for those grants, what the timeline is going to be. I would imagine it's going to be some number of months after February twenty second. So as of now, those timeframes that we've been talking about previously, those are on hold at the moment. We won't really know what this project is going to be, won't be able to develop an RFP. For example, until we know what the result of the state grant is and we know what our bucket of funding is for the project. So where we are today is that we are looking at the state grant application moving forward. Again, we don't know what all the requirements of it are going to be, but at the moment, we're preparing ourselves to make this application. Looking at what we've provided to you previously, about a ten thousand square foot building that would house a library and some shared flexible. Space, we've talked previously about the potential for, for city council chambers to be used primarily by the library. And be flexible that on every other Wednesday, it could be used as a council chambers. And since this is a grant application, it typically makes sense to apply for as much money as you can. With the caveat that this is a matching grant. So however much grant money we receive from the state, we will have to provide an equal amount of local funding. But having said that, we're thinking the, the best course of action for this grant application would be to apply for a full. Design bid build project. In the event that we don't know how many agencies are going to apply for these grants. We don't know if there are going to be potentially partial awards. So there's the potential that we apply for the full amount of grant money we need to do a full design bid build project. And we find out that the granting agency will give us, say, sixty percent of that money, because that's how much when they rank all of the applications is available. And then we would have a conversation about, do we want to do the same project, but do it prefabricated? Because we have less grant money. But the thought at the moment is that we would apply for an amount that would allow us to do a traditional design bid build project. So that's the end of my portion of the presentation. I'm available for any questions. And if there are none, then I will hand it over to city manager Dan Schwartz to talk about the funding.
Yeah, I think we, we probably do have some questions and I see our vice mayor Helmer's hand is up.
Thanks, Julian. Could you go back to the last slide, please? There, this was presented to us as it's indicated at the bottom right on November seventeenth. Our, one of our previous meetings. And you're, this is a question for Dan Schwartz. This is in my recollection, summarizes the direction gave at that meeting. And so you're asking for public comment and any further discussion necessary to affirm this direction, is that correct?
Yes, particularly because I thought there were enough people who wanted clarity on what the direction was at the last meeting. That we thought we should come back with this concise summary.
Thank you.
Anything else from the council? I, I just had one question and maybe, maybe I'll wait until after the city manager completes the presentation. And come back generally to the council with questions from everyone. So one, one, nothing further now, why don't, Dan, you go ahead with your, your portion.
Okay, so give me a second to do the share screen. Okay. So I've been receiving a lot of inquiries about, well, how would we pay for all of this? And I want to stress that Julian and I are not used to seeing a grant program structured this way. So Franklin Escobado is on vacation. If he was here, he'd probably tell you, yeah, this is how the state library always works, because he doesn't seem phased by this. But Julian and I are not accustomed to the application period being in the next three months. And we still haven't seen anything that explains how to apply. But what happened in October was that the state library asked for what they called a pre-application. And it was a very short, hey, how much money do you think you're going to ask for and what would you do with the money? So we did turn it in and say, we'd love to build a library and we'd love for you to give us ten million dollars. So, so that's what we turned in. And if you go to the state library website to look at the information that's up there. It tells you that the pre-application responses are going to inform the application process. So I think that means they're trying to figure out, well, how much money, how much need and demand is there for the pot of money? The four hundred and thirty nine million that's out there. And if folks are interested in this, you can look up the building for library infrastructure program, which is the actual name of the program that we're talking about. I just want to also clarify, when you look at it, you'll see that it emphasizes high poverty areas. And they have a metric for scoring that and not surprisingly, we don't rank very highly in that particular metric. So in what is listed as the top priority of the program, we don't score very well. However, the next priority in the program is our life safety issues and we score very high in that category. So how that's going to shake out and how the, how the state's going to balance these two particular. Issues of, you know, remains to be seen. And as Julian mentioned, this is a local match program. And based on where we land in their poverty matrix, we would be required to do a full dollar for dollar match for whatever money we get. You may see folks who want to go read about this, some communities are going to be allowed to do a lesser match. They're going to be allowed to do fifty cents on the dollar, for example, but we don't qualify that for that. So we would be a dollar, any dollar we get from the state, we have to match with a local dollar. So that's our great unknown is how that's going to work and we'll have to wait and see. We know of two dedicated funding sources for our library project. First of all, we have the generosity of the state and its recent budget. And thank you to Assemblyman Levine for securing a one million dollar state grant for us. That we're in the process of turning in, preparing and turning in the paperwork for. And as we understand it, that doesn't count as local money. So that's not on the table to be match money against whatever comes in the other state grant program. And that's, that's not surprising, that's pretty typical of most grant programs we work with. The Commons Foundation has reported publicly that they have in cash and pledges one point eight million to contribute at this time. And certainly that number might grow before we reach the finish line of this process. So now we get into the tough conversation that will have to happen over the next several months. Which is what are our local resources and what are the policy and opportunity cost implications of tapping into those local resources? And I'm not here today to, to, to break down every dollar. I'm here to give you a sense of what your staff's working on for you and what the pots of money actually are. By a council policy, the most significant fund that's available for discussion as we go through this process is the general fund reserve. By council policy, twenty five percent of, of the. Sorry, twenty five percent of the operating budget essentially for the budget needs to be held in reserve. So essentially every year we have to fund the hundred and twenty five percent of the budget. We can do that and then we also have a fairly healthy reserve at the moment above that. And by council policy, money above whatever's needed to protect operation is available for capital. For capital projects, that's been the council's policy and practice for many years. As the councils heard me talk about many times, building a thirty million dollar federal project. Requires liquidity and cash and careful cash management. This is where that cash has been, it's sitting in the general fund reserve. So exactly how much will be available won't be fully known to us until we resolve the Bonner Bridge project. The other issue before we start diving into the reserve and start figuring out exactly how much we could potentially make available for this project. Is the fact that this is where we go to fund health and safety projects within the CIP that there is no other funding source for. And Julian and I are just now starting that conversation about what's on the horizon in one year, what's on the horizon in five years. That we might have to go into this pot of money, because we don't want to jeopardize health and safety when we're looking at this project. And then lastly, sort of confounding this discussion is, is if the council. Desires to rehabilitate foreigner Magnolia, this, every dollar that you put into the project at Rose Lane. Is a dollar that's not available to rehabilitate foreigner Magnolia. And I think that's going to be a particularly tough conversation when we look at the general fund reserve. But we will be able to talk about, once the bridge is done, several million dollars potentially being. Free from the general fund reserves that I think could be made available for this project if it's the desire of the council. Some of the other local resources, I'm able to talk a little more specifically about what's available. And again, I'm not advocating yet or recommending that you go into these funds. I'm just telling you every pot of money that Administrative Services Director Kathy Orman and I are identifying as potentially being available. The first one that I wanted to talk about is Measure C. Measure C was our first sales tax measure that we passed several years ago. When we finished doing the work under Measure C and we passed Measure B, which was our second sales tax measure, our new one. We had some money left in reserve. The council took the recommendation of the Oversight Committee, which was to hold that money in reserve for potential maintenance. And investment in the fire station. Now that decision was made before the Centralman Fire Authority existed. So now we're kind of in a, a gray area about the firehouses. Because CMFA is doing its own study about the condition of all the firehouses in its jurisdiction. And is planning to come forward with recommendations for the next fifty plus years in terms of infrastructure within. Its jurisdiction. So potentially we could talk about that pot of money being available. And that pot of money actually grew because the curiosity of the way the state works with sales taxes. Up until last year, we were still getting checks as they reconciled books from several years ago. With businesses that had collected Measure C money, but there's approximately eight hundred thousand dollars sitting in that reserve right now. Two items under Measure B to consider, and you know, this is a tough conversation. Measure B is a general tax and it's for essential services. But we should acknowledge that we identified our roads as our primary essential service that we wanted to address with Measure B. That said, Measure B has outperformed our projections by a considerable margin. And that outperformance was exacerbated by the pandemic, because Measure B applies to internet sale. And that flows back into Larkspur whenever you order something on the internet and you have it delivered to your residents or business in Larkspur. And so we actually experienced a bump during the pandemic in the Measure B fund. We have yet to establish a proper, what our reserve policy for that fund will be. We're actually going to talk about that with the Oversight Committee in December and bring you a recommendation. But it could be that we have as much as one point four million above what I'm going to recommend as a reserve. And even if the Oversight Committee suggests a higher reserve, you're still going to have a significant amount of cash in the Measure B fund. And that's distinct from another element of Measure B, which is the actual lease revenue bond that we took out to fund the road rehabilitation program. We can't promise this yet, but we can say with some optimism, Julian's going to put a thumbs up or nod his head as I say this. We think we're going to bring that program in under budget and we think we're going to bring that program under budget by a seven figure number. And so. That means there's still some bond capacity. And while we issued those bonds in order to do the roads, they're actually infrastructure bonds. So a conversation for the council, again, policy and opportunity cost questions that the council will have to go through. Do you want to use that excess capacity on another infrastructure project? Or do you want to retire that extra capacity? Retire is probably the wrong word and probably causing our bond people to cringe. But do you want to essentially not use that extra lease revenue bond capacity and borrow that money? The Measure B lease revenue bonds are super cheap, three percent basically is what we pay on those. So you have to keep that in mind, you're not, you know, you, you don't get the very many opportunities to have seven figures of money that cheap. So this is a conversation the council may want to engage in over the next few months. If, if the lease revenue bond program actually comes in with excess capacity, would we apply it to this project? Or to the building on Magnolia, we'll have that opportunity to talk about that. And I think we'll know probably May or June, we'll probably be done with bidding our last round of the road rehabilitation program. And then we'll know what those numbers really look like. Here we're getting a little, little into the smaller pots, so to speak. But one of those pots is the transient occupancy tax fund reserve. The council will recall, I asked that that be available if the pandemic became so problematic to the city. That we, we had to dive, you know, really dig down to survive. And I was pleased to be wrong and we didn't need to go into every pot of money we had. So the reserve that we were potentially going to tap for the pandemic is still there. And several folks, particularly on the council, have pointed out that the parking lot in, that we would build on Rose Lane is potentially overflow parking for the downtown. And so there is a nexus and an argument to be made because the council's dedicated that particular reserve to be used for business enhancement purposes. Now, I want to emphasize, that's not a legal constraint, that's a policy constraint. So you actually could also just decide you want to take this money out of that fund and put it somewhere else, so. And then, of course, I think one of the ones that really might be polarizing depending on whether you are really invested in the operation of the library versus the building of the new library is the Zimmer Trust money that we received. There's approximately six hundred thousand dollars, which is currently sitting, sitting in an investment that low-risk investments and yielding a nice annual return that by policy the community service director has the option to propose uses for. And you know, if you take it out, we lose that annual influx of, of money that he can invest it to operations or interior. He's, he's done a lot to buy one-time purchases for the interior of the library and for operations, so. And I think my sentence got cut off. I was going to say it's been essential for some of these key interior investments. There's two federal unknowns that I thought I should note because I, I want, people ask me about them periodically. We haven't entirely given up on the possibility that a small percentage of this project might qualify for the American Rescue Plan Act money. And that's because the new buildings are clearly not allowed. You can't, you can't have come up with a new building post this Act meaning path and direct money there. But there's some fuzzy language in, in the guidelines that talks about if your community has identified the need for more outdoor gathering spaces that are more friendly to future pandemic conditions, you might be able to use a percentage to direct to there. So the hard part with the ARPA money is there's not a clear person to ask. Nobody wants to tell you, yes, that's going to be blessed. And you run the risk that down the road, when an audit happens, five, 10 years from now, they tell you you were wrong and you spent it on the wrong item, and you have to do some fiscal gymnastics to restore the situation. As the council knows, I've said the safest thing to do with that money is to spend it on the storm drain. So that's clearly and explicitly identified as a use for that money. The Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act is the new Biden infrastructure bill. There does not appear, as I go through it, to be any money explicitly directed toward the library. But it's possible as the opportunities that are in that bill start to trickle out, it's possible that it will allow us to free up money we've been holding for other projects. As, I think as Julian and his team start to see bulletins about what they can apply for, it's possible we'll be able to save money we had set aside for something is now freed up if we qualify some of that. Still in the preliminary stages and probably will move at a glacial pace. But that said, you got a lot of members of Congress that want to see some of this money flowing out by the 2022 election. So we'll be keeping an eye on that, see if there's any opportunity there. So that gets me to the end of my presentation, Mr. Mayor, and Julian and I are both available for questions and turn it back to you.
Good. Well, thank you very much, Dan and Julian as well, for both of those presentations. I think they both kind of advanced the conversation here a little bit. Any members of the council who would like to ask questions or provide comments on what we've just heard? So I see Catherine Way's hand is up first. Go ahead.
Well, that's a lot of information and a lot of unknowns, but I appreciate you outlining this whole thing. This might be a naive question or uninformed about bonds, but can you, the, the bond that we took out for road repair, when we are done with road repair, can that same bond be reinitiated for a different purpose? Or does it have to be brought back to the community for voting on for a different purpose?
The bonds were issued for city infrastructure and are being spent on the roads. So Bond Council has opined that the construction of city buildings is a qualifying expense for the existing bond. So if the road rehabilitation program comes in under budget, then you could direct the remaining bond proceeds toward another city infrastructure project.
Okay, and the second part of that is, early on in the pandemic, last March, we renegotiated with the bond finance, the interest rate. Is it a potential to renegotiate a larger bond, or do we need to go back to the public for that?
Well, I think if you were talking about borrowing more money, so there's a couple of issues there. One is you haven't had any conversations with the public, and even if you were to pursue bonds that didn't require a vote of the public, I think you'd want to have some conversations there. The second thing is, we're an asset poor city. We, we don't have large, we don't have a lot of buildings, we don't have a lot of assets, and we've leveraged a lot of what we have to get us to the point where we are. In fact, you know, depending on how we make decisions about the future of City Hall and new infrastructure, I've already talked to our bond people to make sure we can have an asset mix that is sufficient to cover our existing debt, and they've assured me we are, okay. But I'm not sure I'd feel comfortable that right now our borrowing capacity is where we would want to necessarily do that. And so that leads me to answer, I think you'd actually be going out for a, a bond that's secured against tax. And then you really do need to have that conversation with the voters.
Okay.
Okay, let's see, Councilmember Candell.
Thank you. Julian and, and Dan, that's, thank you so much. It was really detailed and I appreciate it. I agree with Vice, Vice Mayor Hillmer that the slide that Julian threw up there was accurate as to what we came up with last time and what we want to move forward with. My question, Dan, for you is, I know we have a lot of unknowns now. I don't think that changes anything unless you are advocating for our application to be for the Phase Three twenty million dollar library, in which case we're asking for the ten million dollars in matching, and we put up ten million. Or, or, I mean, to me, it sounds like a little bit of a stretch that we're going to come up with ten million and the, the five and five seems a little bit more realistic was what the original plan was. Are you thinking because of all these potential pots of money that we should, of these try for the twenty million dollar, ten million dollar grant, ten million dollar match and, and see what happens?
We're anxious to see the final direction, but in the grant world that public works and administration normally work, you ask for the most money, right? And then you wait to see what you actually get. And then you solve, then you answer the question you've asked, can, do we actually want to take the whole amount? And quite frankly, there are not a lot of grant programs that I've been involved with that ever give you a full award of what you asked for. They, they usually come back with, well, we've decided agencies like you get sixty percent of what you asked for or something like that. So my advice, and I think Julian's advice at this time is to ask for ten million and, and see what happens.
All right, so then, just as a follow-up, based on, as I said, I, I think Julian's summary was pretty spot-on of what we decided last time. Is there anything that happened between last time and now that you would kind of advise us or give an opinion that we should change that?
No, I don't think so. I think, I think our, I, I think your direction is where we need to be. I think, I think the challenge that we've laid out for ourselves is the one Julian tried to show with the timeline, right? We have, we haven't actually started those timelines. So every day we haven't started those timelines, the, the end date, the realization of the goal is pushed out. And unfortunately, I think so much of this is now driven by, will we get any state grant money? That we don't really have a choice but to, to define the process with the launch of it being that, that answer from the state. So I think your direction's correct at this time.
All right. Hey, thank you. Appreciate it, both of you. Thank you.
And, and, Dan, if I could just kind of follow up on that, because I, I just want to make sure I have a clear understanding about what, how people view to be the direction that was given at the last, at the last meeting, because I think there's some confusion about that. At least there is in my mind. My understanding from the conversation that occurred at the last meeting in terms of providing direction was that the council was comfortable with consideration of an option that would move all or a majority of current city government functions that are conducted at four hundred Magnolia to the parcel down near Rose Lane. As opposed to an affirmative decision ruling out preserving the use of our existing building at four hundred Magnolia as a city hall or for significant city government purposes. And with the understanding that that was the direction that was given for consideration purposes, that's fine with me. I think that's, that, that's okay. I asked, but if, but if it's, if, if the understanding is that the council made an affirmative decision ruling out continued use of four hundred Magnolia as City Hall for the city of Larkspur or preserving some significant city functions in that building, that was not, that was not what I understood the direction to be. And I asked that question in part because I've been hearing from some folks within our community who are concerned about a, a direction that might take City, City Hall out of four hundred Magnolia. And I think that's a, that's a question that still needs some further fleshing out. So that's kind of a long-winded way of getting to a question that I had that's more specific. Some of the concerns that I've heard really have to do with, and maybe that's the, the slide earlier or closer to the end of Julian's presentation, where the cost estimates for doing a full rehabilitation or renovation of City Hall were put up as opposed to the price tag for a, a new built-out City Hall building that could have multiple purposes at the Rose Lane parcel. And the difference between those two numbers is ten million for rehabilitation to City Hall and five million for, for putting city government functions down on Rose Lane. Is that, is that, are those the two numbers that I'm correctly talking about?
Well, there's lots to unpack there, Mr. Mayor. So I'd like to answer all your questions, but, but maybe in the order you asked them.
Okay, yeah, and, and just to, just to get to the bottom line, I think that, the, 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 the end of my lengthy series of questions here, comments were, was really some skepticism about those numbers, and particularly the numbers were, were out for rehabilitation of, of City Hall. And I think it would be helpful if we had more detail on that, not tonight, but to, to have that broken down better. But anyway, I'll shut up at this point.
So I'm going to, I'm going to start, I'm going to actually start then there, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to say something really arrogant. I've been working here a long time, and I have to tell you, about every two years, I throw numbers out there and I hear that comment from somebody. And every public works director that's worked under me has been spot-on with their numbers. And I feel very confident that Mr. Skinner is spot-on on that number. And he said ten to twelve million, and I'm going to take ten to twelve million to the bank. That's what it's going to cost. And anybody is skeptical about that, let's wait and see. But every other number I've brought from every public work structure that's worked under me for you has been right.
And, and I'm not questioning anyone's integrity or, or capacity to make good, solid estimates. I'm just reflecting things that I've heard in the community, and I wanted to share that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Could I clarify what my recollection of the conversation was last week? We haven't gotten into the debate that you're starting here. The, the focus of the direction was really to allow city manager and staff to have maximum flexibility in pursuit of that grant.
Yes, that was the focus of that discussion.
With respect to facilities, master planning and where uses ultimately land and the repurposing of, potential repurposing of City Hall, those are conversations we have not started.
That was, that's consistent with my, my understanding.
To get into those things this evening, I think creates more confusion and frustration for the staff.
And I, I appreciate that, and that was, that was not my intent. My intent was to get clarification on what direction was provided to staff. And I think my recollection is consistent with what you just described. But I think it's important to make sure that that's clearly understood, both within the council and, and the public.
If, if I could just augment that, one thing that I think we decided that Councilmember Way brought up and was very clear was that the library will never go back to that, that building. The library is going to go in Rose Lane. What happens with the rest of the city offices, we haven't decided yet. That's still on the table. But the library is no longer on the table. That decision was made, and I just want to make sure we're all on the same page with that.
And that's, that's consistent with my understanding as well.
So I, yeah, thank you for bringing that up, Dan Hillmer, because I think we're, we're overstepping what our situation is now. What my understanding is, is that to maximize the potential dollar amount we can get from a federal, from a state grant is to envision a permanent library space at the Commons property now and the flexible space that could be a community's building, a community room and/or office space for our city governance as a ability to maximize our request. That doesn't mean we've totally decided that four hundred Magnolia is kaput. I don't think we're anywhere near that yet because there are opportunities or possibilities for four hundred Magnolia for its use as a civic building, but that's a long conversation. I, I, I think we, we don't want to get ahead of that, but I think we have a time crunch of February for an application to say we are committed to a five hundred square foot minimum library and we're committed to a second phase, which would be five hundred square feet. And in that space will be a multi-use space for offices and city functions. And that's what I heard, and that's what I think is the best strategy for us to do.
And beyond pursuit of the grant, I think we would all agree that the next step would be to open a public conversation and get public feedback on next steps.
For four hundred Magnolia, I agree, because I, I think we've, it's a complex problem that's happening there, and it's a lot of money. And we also need to engage with what our community expects a civic building to provide for the public in the 21st century. And, and if it's possible for it to be in small spaces, let's do it. But my vision is probably that a nineteen, thirteen, hundred-year-old building may not be the best use for public, for serving the public. But that's a whole, that's a conversation further down the road. I don't want to get ahead of it because renovating that is going to cost a lot of money. The library is the priority and the space there that people are envisioning to me is the priority.
And I appreciate that, and I wasn't, by asking my questions or making my comments a few minutes ago, I wasn't intending to challenge that at all. It was just a reflection of public input that I've received that raises the question to make sure that we have clarity on the direction that came out of that meeting. And I think that the comments that we have shared among ourselves tonight is consistent with a common view of what that direction is. And, and I'm perfectly fine with that. I mean, I participated in that conversation just like the rest of you. This is only in a, a I mean, I participated in that conversation just like the rest of you. This is only an opportunity to get some clarification so we all know what we're talking about. Councilmember Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just taking a step back, I had two points I wanted to clarify. For the city manager, the slide deck that you ran through, I didn't quite write down fast enough. If you were to take all the sums, Measure C, Bon Air Bridge, Transfer Occupancy, et cetera, what is the total amount there? Just summing it up, not trying to imply it's used for any given purpose.
Well, the unknown is we still need to complete our analysis of the needs in the general fund reserves. So we're probably talking somewhere from six to 10 million dollars.
Okay, so a range of six to 10. I appreciate that. And then the, the second was, I think this was, you know, stated, but if we apply for 10 million and we get 10 million, you know, some by, you know, act of miracle, we can exercise the option to use less than that money, right? You know, it would be wonderful to have that, you know, that kind of a problem, but is that an option for us, you know, to still, you know, actually apply less money because we decide we want to match less?
So when the grant application and guidelines come out, we can answer that question. We can't now. So if the guidelines come out and they say you have to be able to match exactly what you asked for, then we'll probably need to rethink this. But in my, it's usually the rule of thumb is ask for the maximum and then see what happens. And you work a lot of these, work a lot of the details out later. And you know, the way the state library is running this grant so far, it's extraordinarily fluid. So I would think it will continue to be so as they go through the award process.
Okay, appreciate the answer and also looking forward to public comments with the patient people in the room.
Okay, thanks. Anything else from members of the council at this point?
So Mr. Mayor, I didn't ever answer a couple of your questions. And although several council members addressed the number of them, I think for the benefit of the public before you open its comment, I'll explain what I believe the direction is. I, as Councilmember Candell said, I think the one thing the council actually decided, the only thing the council has decided is that the library is moving. Then we asked-
That's, that sounds right.
Then we asked the council to give us some general direction because we didn't want to, we needed to narrow the scope of what we're working on. And so the direction as we understood it was to plan for the 5,000 square foot library at this time. Be prepared for what happens if we get the miracle $10 million from the state and we get all of it. And then also look at this civic campus idea so that we could at least have that as a discussion point. And so those are the things that Julian's team is working on so that we can provide you that information when the time comes. We haven't been working on anything else yet and you haven't made any other decisions to date. One thing to keep in mind is there's an economies of scale issue that we face when we finally go to commission the library project. If we're at all entertaining a bigger complex for the library or we're contemplating a civic campus complex, you don't want to build them in phases if you have the money to build them at once. You want to build them in phases if you don't have the money to build them at once. But if you have the means to build them at once, you want to capture all that economies of scale. So that, that's why there is some decision in 2022, I think, where you have to, have to resolve all of this so that we can move everything forward. And when that is, it's going to be driven heavily by when the state tells us they're going to answer the question about the grant.
Okay, well, thank you for that further elaboration, Dan. And I, I truly think with this, this conversation has been helpful because it has clarified what we did previously in the course that we are now on. And I'm comfortable with that personally, and I'm gathering the rest of the council is as well. Are there any more comments or questions from the council before we turn it over to the public? Seeing none, why don't we then go to public comment on this item? And I see that we have a bunch of written comments that have been already submitted. And Allison, I take it those have all now been shared with the council?
That's correct. Email comments before, that came in before the meeting is available on the online agenda packet.
Okay. And then members of the public can click on those and see what, what is said in the individual comments. Well, in that case, we'll, we see if there's anyone in the queue who would like to say something at tonight's meeting. And I'll invite that and be as a reminder. I don't know how many people may want to make comments, but I'm going to run the clock on it and try to keep everything within that three-minute timeframe. So go ahead, Allison, see what we have.
My first comment will come from Joan Lubomirsky.
Okay, Joan, welcome. Go ahead.
Thank you. I did write to the city council. And first, I would like to thank the council and the staff for their ongoing service to the city. I admire your, I admire the serious work you're doing. What I'd like to talk about is first of all, that the title of this item on the agenda did not clearly describe what was going to be discussed at the meeting. It didn't adequately inform the public of possible directions the council could be taking. And I, 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 I do think that moving on the library question is fine. But on other items, I think we need more, much more public discussion and information. And speaking of which, the staff report could have included some of those slides that the public works director showed you this evening. I think it would have been good for the public to begin to understand that. The public information is going to be important for our bond measure. And I think the sooner that that information can be shared and, and, and support engendered, really, the better. Because when people don't know what's happening, they get angry. I would suggest the town meeting be held in the spring. And it could be, the, your city manager and public works director and council could decide that. But I think some sort of discussion needs to start. It won't be the final word, but I think the public needs to be, to, to talk about this and to learn about it. I, I, I think the future of our iconic City Hall, again, we can't say anything specifically, of course, you don't have the data. But I think it does deserve, it would have deserved a few sentences in the staff report. So that, so that the public could have realized it's a package, that there are multiple things moving around this package. And in terms of the town meeting, people are preoccupied these days. I mean, I, I, I imagine that the council is with COVID and unemployment and childcare and everything. So these, this is, these items shouldn't be discussed piecemeal. To the extent that you can at least begin a package that you could bring to the public and they could be educated and they could comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Joan. Who's next in the queue? Allison?
Mr. Mayor, may I clarify a comment that was made by the previous speaker?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
I, I heard the statement, bond measure related to the direction we're giving. We have no direction related to any upcoming bond measure. The discussion of bonds were related to previously adopted projects where we were discussing any residual resources that may be available, but there are no upcoming bond measures contemplated with respect to our direction this evening, just to be clear.
I think that's a fair clarification and thank you for that. So back to the public, who's next in line?
I'm looking for any additional raised hands or email comments. I'll go to Chris Wheaton.
Okay, Chris, go ahead.
Hi, thanks for this discussion and I appreciate the fact that this has been going on for a bit and incremental to get everyone used to what the plan is. And I just wanted to let you know, I, I am I'm a resident of Rose Lane. I've commented before and I've also served on the Rose Lane HOA. And I've been named as the liaison for the HOA to the city related to Rose Lane's concerns, questions about the library and City Hall project. So I'll be interfacing more with Julian. I did talk to Julian Skinner this week. And I just wanted to continue to keep in front of everybody concerns we have. This is a neighborhood that you're placing this in and it is a planned neighborhood and planned community. And we just want to make sure that people are paying attention to that. And the concerns that keep coming up fall into three or four categories. One is just parking, just to make sure there's more than adequate parking and that that's not a spillover to the neighborhood because we already have a parking issue in the neighborhood in terms of capacity. Julian mentioned that built into this could be construction parking provisions to make sure that there's not, that construction workers not parking in the neighborhood. And we'd love to have the parking lot maybe built first so that construction workers could park on site. There's some aesthetic concerns of just making sure that the, the area while it's under construction is maybe masked with some landscaping. Traffic is a, a major concern too, and that we would like to make sure that the traffic, if it does come into the neighborhood, that it exits. It doesn't come through the neighborhood, meaning it comes down Rose Lane and does not go down Orchid or use a cut through there. So possibly like a no left turn sign coming out of that parking lot would provide, you know, some sort of resistance to make the left turn out of that parking lot and then on to, to Orchid Drive. Roads, we've asked for a contribution for the roads. We pay for those roads and they're private, private with public access. But we'd like to make sure that if you, the city started to use it for their project, that we get contributions for the road maintenance. And then finally, the aesthetic, again, we built this, this was built by the city. It's 29 homes, 40 condos, a number of other accessible homes that are in the community and they were all built down to the shutter, down to the window and to put a temporary structure, to put something that's not a full design building, we think is not consistent with the character of the neighborhood. So we just ask all the council members to look at this as if it was being put in your backyard and take it into that consideration as to whether you would want the traffic or the parking or the aesthetic. And just to make sure that that's all being considered. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Chris. Right on time. Who's next, Allison?
Next, we'll hear from James Holm.
Okay, James, why don't you go ahead?
James Holm Slaxburgh, a comment about square footage. My dim recollection was that the original conception for the library was a 5,000 square feet initially and then 5,000 square feet later for ultimately a 10,000 square foot library, which would be roughly twice the size of the current library. If the, if there is a 5,000 square foot civic campus in addition to the 5,000 square foot library, then that kind of squeezes the, the library. That, that sort of kind of seems to foreclose the additional 5,000 square feet for the library and essentially freezes it at 5,000 square feet. So it, it does seem to me that having a civic campus there would have a pretty drastic curtailment of what had been the dream of the library supporters. And I also just remind people in case they forget that the original conception was also that the new library would be privately funded. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Appreciate that. Next comment?
Next, we'll hear from Joan Munstrum.
Thank you very much. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Larkspur Community Foundation, which had a meeting yesterday. And this was a written comment, but also I'm just going to reread it. At yesterday's meeting, the board of the Larkspur Community Foundation, it was unanimous conception, consensus that the vitally important issues of what happens on the city's Rose Lane property and for City Hall be brought before the community in a widely publicized town meeting event in a large public space. Such long-range decisions of our major facilities need broad input. As one of our board members said in a separate comment, we're, we're all extremely confused as to what's happening. And we believe that a, this now is the time to reach out to, to the public to have broad information, that some of the, the things that you've been talking about tonight and clarify exactly what, the summary to clarify that the only thing that you have given direction on is that the library moves and the whole broader issue, complex issue of City Hall, City Hall functions, what happens on Rose Lane. The, the next step is to have a concerted effort to involve the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joan.
Keep up the good work.
You too. Thank you very much. Next in the queue?
Next, we'll hear from Barbara Friday.
Barbara, welcome.
I'm here. I just wanted to say a particular thank you to our, our city staff because I thought that report was very thoughtful and specific and extremely helpful. And so thank you, Dan, and thank you, Julian. That was my only comment.
Good. Those are the, we like those comments. Thanks very much. Appreciate that. Next comment?
I'm looking for any additional raised hands or emailed comments. I'll note that we have a speaker who's already had a chance to comment with a raised hand again, if you'd like to allow repeat comments to occur.
Not repeat, but if there's an elaboration from the person who has their hand up, I think we can, that's, especially if that's the only one who has their hand up, that's fine.
Oh, and it looks like it may have been a hand raised in error. So I am looking for any further raised hands or email comments. And there's no further public comment.
Okay, good. Well, great. This has been a, at least in my mind certainly, and I hope for others as well, a helpful and productive conversation that I think gives a little additional clarity on what we're doing to the public. Unless there is anything else from the council, I think we'll wrap this up. But this is not an action item. It's just to receive a presentation and provide direction to staff. Dan Schwartz and Julian, is there anything further you would like us to address for your benefit in giving direction?
I think we, we have our understanding of what we're doing next. We will report out to the council and the community once we've evaluated the library grant program and can give you more details of exactly how the state's envisioning it'll work.
Good. I think that would be, would be terrific. And I hope they give us that, that clarity on a timely basis. So with that, we got a finger up from our vice mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank the members of the public who made comments tonight. Speaking for myself, I certainly understand the confusion around these complex issues. And when opportunities come up for us, sometimes we need to create some space around that opportunity before we can actually get to more wide-ranging discussion of our goals and objectives with respect to these important issues. So I appreciate the comments tonight. I thought they were all very, very expressed a clear understanding of what we're doing. And I look forward to the next steps where we bring this conversation to the public, probably through a series of meetings, not just one. So thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
And I, I think we all share with those, those observations and look forward to engaging the public on that basis. Councilmember Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank all the public comments. And I think that there was a fairly specific request which reflects, you know, what I think might be a general desire. And that's to try to hold a meeting, you know, broadly publicized meeting for broader public input in February, which is when we think we'll have answers on the grants. Because as, as I summarized the situation- Because as, as I summarize the situation in my mind, you know, part of the somewhat confusion is just lack of information. You know, the biggest is funding. We don't know. And without the money, you know, we're not sure what we're going to design and what our budget is. And then in my mind, one of the biggest uncertainties, which we probably need to discuss later is what opportunity costs are we talking about? You know, forefront for me is public safety, you know, unfunded liabilities for the police station and for the storm drains. And, you know, we, we really don't know what we're giving up or what we're getting. So to, you know, come back to my main point. If, if we can at least, you know, suggest to staff to look at our February calendar and see if there's a way to create a public forum here, whether it's at the Hall Middle School or something, you know, where, you know, if it's in person or however we do it at the time, I, I also would really appreciate knowing that everybody has voiced their opinion and tried to tie together the disparate issues of, of unfunded liability, opportunity cost, city hall. What money we get? I mean, hopefully the, the picture will clarify, but it, it really should get some more public input. Thank you.
Catherine, you've got something?
I, I agree with that, Gabe, but we've been at this a long time trying to get this up and running at Rose Lane, now the Commons area. And we've been through a whole series of look and feel Larkspur workshops. And I, I, we have to keep guardrails on this, that this doesn't become another two year lengthy process of, of trying to reimagine and think about what the look and feel of Larkspur is. Because we, we lost so much time when we went through that. So I, I'm all really, really interested in public workshops, but I want to make sure we keep a direct laser focus on getting this to the finish line. Because we can spend another five years going around with little can feel of Larkspur conversations. If we don't hunker down and get this done. So I'm all for, I'm all for him, but I, I want to keep us moving straight ahead. Else we're going to lose momentum again. Which this project has lost momentum in the course of my time on this council, two or three times, it's lost momentum for various reasons. And we're on momentum now, so let's just keep it going.
Okay, thanks for that. Councilmember Candell?
As a follow up on that, a question for Dan and Julian. Can we do anything now? I mean, I know that we are waiting for responses for grant proposals and things like that. However, given that we have decided we are moving the library to the Rose Lane property. Can we start the wheels moving in any way and dig up some dirt and draw some plans? Is there anything that we can do to take steps in that direction? As opposed to sitting on our hands, waiting for the government to tell us how much money we're going to get?
We really are. We can't really do any physical work because it's all one project that we would bid together to capture the proper economy to scale. We are doing what we can do now, which is planning and evaluating and prepping. And so because we've gotten a definitive direction to at least plan for the 5,000 square foot facility that's going to house the library. Julian's team is already discussing how to prepare those plans and how to be ready as you make more definitive decisions and as funding opportunities become clear. So we'll be as ready to go as we think we can possibly be as these milestones start to be realized.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, ma'am, make us one, one more comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Not to take anything away from Councilmember Candell, but I, his remarks, but I, I want to emphasize. I would not characterize the work the city staff has been doing in any way or work they're going to be doing is sitting on their hands. I think there's an incredible amount of creativity that's taken place in a very short period of time to get us to where we are. And I really appreciate that creativity in light of the complexity of the problems we're facing. So I, I, I know they're working as hard as they can, as fast as they can with the resources they have and the opportunities there in front of them. And I, I know that they're keeping space for the things that they don't know about until they do. So I, I just want to express my gratitude for the hard work that city staff has done to get us here tonight. And I look forward to working with them and you in the future.
And, and Dan, let me just say, I, I appreciate that. And I, I withdraw that comment in the sense that it wasn't meant to be the city staff sitting on their hands. It was more the city council sitting on our hands and not moving this project. Taking advantage of the momentum that we have to make sure the ball keeps rolling. So thank you for that correction. I appreciate that.
Okay, now we can sing kumbaya. Good. Well, unless there's anything else for the council, I think we'll wrap this item up. I think staff has the direction that they need from this conversation. But we'll be, we'll be working back and forth with the community and with everyone involved to make sure we get this one right and get it done in a timely way as councilmember Way has reflected. So let's wrap up 8.1 and move to 8.2, which hopefully will be somewhat less controversial. This is to designate the city's property at the intersection of Rose Lane, the property we've been talking about and Doherty Drive as the Commons, which is a specific proposal that's been requested. And we have a proposed resolution to accomplish that. We've had a handful of written public comments, including well, from a variety of different sources. And there's also a kind of a copy of the draft resolution that's on the, the agenda with those comments as well. So with that, we'll open it up for a staff report first.
I don't have a whole lot more to add to that, Mr. Mayor. Essentially, the designated name in all of our city documents is the, the community facility parcel. And the request is that whenever possible, we designate the property as the commons going forward. You know, there will be occasions where we have to refer to adopted documents that have the term community facilities parcel in them. But with this resolution passing, staff will pivot to the, to the direction.
Okay, I think that, that's, that's fair, fair enough. So we have that as a proposal. Do we have any comments from the council at this point? Councilmember Way?
I'm in full support of this. I think it's very important that we honor and acknowledge that we have a committed group of Larkspur and Greenbrier residents who are working really hard to make this a public private partnership. And this will help them in their marketing and in their reach to our extended community. So that the confusion is less and maybe the fundraising is greater. So I, I'm very appreciative of the hard work that our Commons Foundation team is doing. And I hope we can continue to support them in their reach by continuing to have consistent messaging.
If that's a motion, I'll second it. And I know we have public comment.
I'll, I'll, I'll make that similar motion after public comment.
So we'll, we'll, we'll do that anticipatorily. But we will, unless there's anything further from the council. Let's see if there's anyone in the public who would like to add to what's already been submitted from that source. Allison, anybody in line?
My first comment will come from James Holm.
James, go ahead.
Uh, James Holmes, I, I really don't have any, any objection to this, but I am a little bit discomfited by the fact that the term common has so many different meanings. Including belonging or relating to the community at large, public, widely existing in general. Or not of the upper classes of the masses, having no rank, below ordinary, inferior, vulgar, low and coarse. So that's, that's quite a range that I, I can't help but thinking about. And also I, I dimly remember that there was a, a treatise written that was called, quote, "The Tragedy of the Commons," unquote. And unfortunately, I can't quite remember what it pertained to, but I would just earnestly hope that that particular title would not become applicable to, to this parcel. Thank you.
Thank you, James. I'm, I'm well familiar with the concept of the tragedy of the commons and I'd be happy to have a conversation with you about what it means offline. And I, I appreciate your checking on or your, your well thumbed copy of Webster's Collegiate Dictionary tonight for, for that, kind of that comment. Who's next in queue?
I'm looking for any additional raised hands or emailed comments. We'll hear from Joe Jennings.
Joe, go ahead.
Hi, it's Joe Jennings from the Commons Foundation. I just want to respond to James and say that we're at home on the range. But the, the term, the term has a long history in Anglo Saxon history. It refers to common land held in, in trust by the public in a community for the greater benefit of the community. And so we thought that the traditional Anglo Saxon meaning of the legal term, the commons was the best term we could come up with and was also one that was studied by the city and they thought was pretty good. I'll leave it at that.
So we've got a historian and an linguist tonight. Good, great. Thank you, Joe. I think we have a commentary to be provided by our vice mayor. Go ahead.
Only in recognizing the one precedent that I know of Marin County, and that is the civic complex at Lucas Valley Road in Los Camos, which is known as Marin Commons. So there's one that exists within our county that's quite a solid precedent.
Thank you for that, that, that insight. Anyone else in the public queue, Allison?
Looking for any additional raised hands or emailed comments. And there is no further public comment.
Okay, well, terrific. This has been a fun conversation and I appreciate everyone's participation. I think we had a tentative motion on file, which was going to be confirmed as a permanent one. Catherine Way do that.
So I would like to move item 8.2, designate the city's property at the intersection of Rose Lane and Doherty Drive as the Commons.
And I think we had an anticipatory second, which can be confirmed by the vice mayor. He's doing that with his V for victory sign. And I think we can call a roll call vote.
That was a second.
Councilmember?
No, sorry.
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Helmer?
Yes.
Mayor Harrow?
Yes, the motion is approved and I look forward to signing the resolution by DocuSign later tonight. Unless there's anything further on this item, I think we're going to conclude. And that is the last item before adjournment. So we are now at adjournment. I'll ask for a motion in a second to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I will second that motion.
Second, and without any objection from the council, I declare this meeting hereby to be adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good meeting.